To do your miss. So I really appreciate that and um I think I have just thirty minutes for presentation fifty minutes for question and answer, am I right? Okay, so I may need to move a bit fast, just bear with me. Uh so like um Yusuf have said, we are going to look at some other sources of funding. That can help you with um your research activities or research project. So without um further ado, let me just share my screen with you. Okay, just let me know if you can see my screen, please. All right, can you see my slide?
Yes, we can see our screen.
Okay, good. So um yeah, the title is just um the search for research grant in um. Low and middle income countries using databases and um what are means of getting funding. So I'm going to show you through, I mean, some opportunities you can search. And there will be a kind of ten minute section where we can just do a quick search together. And see what you can come up with. So uh the content is just the learning objective, non NIH funding opportunities and then funding databases. So we're going to talk about this too. So the we I have three learning objectives here for everyone who's um participating to understand and source for non NIH. Um funding opportunities and also to identify and such funding opportunities. And also navigate through one of the databases. So I'm going to show you two. But then we are going to search through one, or possibly two, if the time uh permit us to do that. Let me see if I can just minimize this one a little bit to make it better for me. All right, so now um. During my presentation, I like um having a kind of interaction with the participants. So what I want you to do, please um is um for you to just. Uh go to Slido if you don't um have it, that's not a problem, just use your phone, your smartphone. You can take the picture of the um QR code or you can just type Slido dot com. And then put this number and please just complete this, it's just to see what uh you've done before. As regards um searching for funding opportunity, I just wanted to see how many of us have done that before and so like that. Let's see if I can bring this one a little bit down. Okay, so let's see, please um you can go home to do this, please um it's just to help me to know. Uh how I have to deliver the um the workshop, so that's. Okay, I think we need more people to complete it, more people please, we have um. Three more to go with this, it's just to give us an an idea of um. How people are using databases to search for funding opportunities or they've not done so. From what I could see here, out of thirty three people have completed it, seventy nine percent. Seventy six said, yes, they've searched for funding opportunities before. They've searched for funding opportunities before, which is quite good. Thirty six people, I think we are over hundred, so I will appreciate if we can have more people. So you can still go on to do this, um the pool will keep coming. We have another one for those who have completed um the pool, you can just go on to the second one. Which is this, oh sorry. So if you answered yes to the first question, possibly provide a name of the database or databases you've used. Just for everyone to see and that will also help to see if the one I'm going to share with you. Is what you're already familiar with or not. Okay, WHO. No, Google Search, that's good. Good, Get Foundation, Scientific, Go It's Foundation. Okay, NIH, Welcome Trust. Horizon, Google, Google Search, okay, that's good. Opportunity Desk, Welcome. Get them, okay, I think we have a lot of people. Um who have such good before. Okay, Welcome Trust. Okay, Society, uh huh. Grants dot gov, Google Search, okay. So please keep um completing that, we still have two more to go, this is just to see. And I've been able to pick one thing there that somebody mentioned, so you are going to see the trialite, uh huh. Okay, so we can keep um completing this, so let's look at this. Now, for those who have um possibly searched for funding before, what are the challenges that you have faced with when you were searching for opportunities? Again, this is also to give an idea or overview of what people are. Uh the challenges people are faced with and that will help later on to see how one can help in solving that some. Challenge, okay, determining eligibility, a lot of information to sift through, finding active cause. Country of foraging requirements. Yeah, so this question is just what are the challenges you face um. Yeah, you don't need to put the database here, does the challenges. Okay. The because, okay, unable to filter down eligibility, knowledge requirement, um okay. Tight conditions, timeline, okay. All right, so let's keep transparency, I'm not sure what that person mean by that, time to write. Okay, so the challenges is so what has to do with the search in itself, not really the process of writing the. Application, but what are those challenges you are confronted with when you search for funding opportunities? So someone say budget as we are, that's good, but what are the challenges in terms of maybe the eligibility is not clear? There's no available, so I don't want to put words into your mouth, just some things like that, so while. Um you are doing that, let's move on to the next one. So based on those challenges, if you were to um suggest. Some features that you want to see in a kind of funding database, what are the things you are going to suggest? So this is the last one and then we continue. So what would be your suggestion? So if, for example. Um I'm a company or company owner who um has a database for funding opportunities. What are the things you will want me to have on that database? What are the features? What are the facilities? User friendly, okay, feed focus, okay, veterinary background, okay. Clear eligibility criteria and expectations. Okay, so this is focusing on databases now, not the funding organization, this is just the database. Okay, auto fill, professional filter, okay, freely accessible, okay. Please more responses, please rest uh suspicion to receive email a lot, okay. Taking on ideas that are transformative, clear funders focus, yeah, so the. This question is focusing on the features, what would you like the database to have? If you are to make a suggestion to a company or you are to make a suggestion to an organization who wants to have. Um a kind of funding database, what will you want to see? Okay, ability to subscribe, that's a good one, specialty focus, how specific, that's good. Uh country specific, that is good. So please keep uh coming up with some of those uh features you would like to see, okay. So they are not the one funding. Project, they are not the one providing the money, is just the database, they house different funding opportunities. So what are the things you want to see? Someone mentioned uh user friendly, which is a very good one. Someone also mentioned um uh discipline specific, which is also good. And someone also mentioned ability to have a kind of email alert, which is also good, so please keep typing them in. All these are very useful, you know. Shots. Show sorts of boxes grouping information, okay. Filter option, good, that's one of the features I'm looking forward to. Searchable and intuitive interface, okay, that's a good one, please keep typing more of this, is is very important. So that we can know in case um. You know, some of this databases one can make the suggestion to them, that's all, these are some of the things people would like to have in that um. Database, keyword search, that's good. Transparency, I'm not sure of this transparency, because they are not the one. Who is sending, I mean, who is funding the project, they are just housing, it's just like Google, so anyone can put information there. Anyone can put information there, so what are the features, online chat, okay? Region for the funding, that's good. Uh specificity, scope of funding, okay. All right, so keep typing, please, um I'll move on, but then you can just keep typing funding. From different countries beside USA, that's good, review from previous assessment, they don't have. Uh the databases don't have access to the assessment, because they are just like providing the opportunities. They are not the one providing the money, so some of those things may not necessarily concern um the. O- organization or the company that is actually housing. The funding opportunity, offline accessibility, that is a good one. This is how specific research areas, okay? All right, so we can keep typing that one in and by the end of this um workshop, you can also still type more if you want. I will still go back through, I mean, go through them again, all right, so. We are going to look at sourcing for non NIH funding opportunities, um. Okay, so research funding is one of the key drivers of innovation and national development. And there are numerous funding opportunities available for different research disciplines, but finding the right opportunity could be very daunting. However, with proper guidance, determination and the right information skills and um. Researchers can find and apply for funding opportunity, which is the aim of this um workshop, so that you can see. Different ways in which you can get funding opportunities, so you may be familiar, so give me that. All right, funding could be small, medium or large, depending on the amounts requested and. On the um amount available and from the funding source. So sometimes it may just be a thousand dollar, like this year, I got a grant of um. Five hundred Australian dollars and which was meant for a conference. And you may get possibly two thousand five hundred dollars or five thousand USD or five thousand pounds, depending on. You know, the amount of um um the resources that is available to the funder. All right, so there are different types of funding opportunities, we have conference, travel grants. And then we have locally advertised competitive grants, some of them you may be familiar with, or you might have been uh taught some of these things. You have those that are na- nationally competitive, here in Australia, we have a nationally competitive grant, which we call. Australian Research Council Grants and there are quite many, so people apply for it. Currently, we have some researchers who are applying for one of them. And I think if I'm not wrong, we have over twenty people who are applying for that grant from my own institution alone. So we have internationally advertised competitive grant too, like um NIH. And some of the one of um Ukraine in um UK, and then another funding. Or opportunity of type is contract research, what we call contract research or consultancy. Contract research has to do with a company or an individual. Coming to you and asking you to help them solve their problem and they are going to pay for your time. And this is the amount and you are agree on that, it's quite different from somebody, maybe a student contracting their assignment out, that is not what we are saying. This is an organization that has a problem with their production. And they need someone with the expertise to be able to solve that problem and the person can charge them money. So it's also part of funding and then another one is um conference registration grants, you can also. Apply for equipment grant and also visiting grants, you can get grant to visit a lab. To carry out some research as you activities. And also we have a professional society grant, we are going to look at some of these grants shortly. Now, before sourcing or applying for grants, you have to be intentional, be determined, prepare ahead of time. Spread tentacles and also be a good record keeper. Now, time will not permit me to go in depth into some of these things, but you have to be intentional in terms of. This is what you want. And you have to be determined alongside with it, because. Passing away with money is not easy, so for you to get that grant. You have to be determined, because a lot of people will be applying for it, averagely. The number of people are successful in grant application is just like one out of five, so it's just like twenty five percent. And even in some cases, it's less than twenty five percent, so it's so small that it's highly competitive. So there's a need to prepare ahead of time, not just overnight, like I got a message before joining this workshop now. From someone, a professor, telling their student that the student should look for grant opportunity. To carry out their PhD, you know, research, so I was just thinking, hmm. I I'm not sure how people can just wake up overnight and you just want a grant. For a project that is already on ground. You have to plan ahead of time. It may take two, three, four months, even a year to plan ahead of time, so it's very important that we plan ahead of time. It's not what we just wake up overnight and say I want to apply for grants, no. Then spread your tentacles, don't just focus on one grant, spread it across to different um scheme or different opportunities. And then be a good record keeper, keep record of all those ones you are applying for. And not only that, you try to um keep record of your achievements, there are requirements, which I believe. Um it has been explained to you, if you don't have a good track record, that's why we call track record, track recorder is just um. What you are capable of doing, what you have achieved, so that will help anyone who wants to give you the money. To be able to look at it and say, okay, yeah, based on what you've done in time past. Your qualification, your knowledge, your skill, your expertise, yes, we can give you this money, because we know you are going to make good use of the money. All right, so let's quickly go through um searching for funding now, somebody mentioned Google. Or more than two or three people mentioned Google, so you can actually search directly from Google. Like, for example, I did this today, I just typed call for grant application microbiology twenty twenty five. And all these um were listed, so the first one is a society, the second one is also a society, the third one. Is a funding database, which somebody mentioned when I was asking you to uh list. The database of platform that you have um searched before, so that's a good one. And then you have the E S um E S C M I D, it's also a society uh. Kind of grant, so this are ways you can easily get grant opportunity, however, some of them might have closed. So you need to use them to plan for your future application, we are going to do a bit of um direct. Uh as on after this, all right, so the second one is um. Professional society website, like going by the first slide, the other slide I showed. We have microbiology society, so if you click microbiology society, it will take you to this page, which is um. Research visits grant, so you, in this case, you can have um. Grant to visit a particular lab and this is about three thousand pounds or so. So you can visit a lab to carry out research, which is quite interesting. And let's see another one, this is also society, this is um applied microbiology international, so depending on your. Um your discipline, you can search for any of these grants, so because my background is microbiology, now is why I put microbiology. So you can just put call for grant application, maybe veterinary medicine. Two thousand and twenty six, not two thousand and twenty five anymore. Two thousand and twenty six, so that will give you enough time to prepare for it. Now, for this society, uh microbiology society, you have quite a number of grant day, you have the local travel grants. You have the grant to present your working conferences, you have small project grants, capacity building grants in low income countries. Opportunities to get research experience before you graduate as student and also access to grant at partner organization. So these are different ways in which you can get funding for your project. All right, another way of getting grants is through your university or postgraduate school, so in some university, like for example. Uh here in Australia, I completed my PhD at the University of uh Tasmania. I remember during my PhD, I got two thousand five hundred Australian dollar. To go to another lab for visiting to carry out some research work, so it was quite um um interesting one, so. Those who are students, you can search through your university website or if you have graduate school, you can ask them. Uh one of my uh PhD students, I saw the opportunity myself that the university wanted to. Give us some grant opportunity, so I forwarded it to the student, okay, go for this. And the student was able to apply some days ago, so. Look through your postgraduate school or your university website, they may have funding opportunities. And it could be for travel, for collaboration, it can also be for stipend. Just such, okay, the fourth one is um funding databases, so that was why I asked, which one have you used before? Somebody mentioned Scientific, which is good, is one of the, you know, current uh research funding. Databases that are available, we are going to do hands on on this, I'm conscious of the time, but we are still going to do some bit of hands on with this one. And then the second one under the database is grant forward, uh nobody mentioned grant forward, so. I can put you through this one a little bit too. All right, let's look at the fifth one, which is close call, now. This may sound hard, but you can use grant opportunities that have closed. To be able to apply for subsequent one. For example, this society, which is Royal Society of Tropical Medicine and Health. They do give early career researcher around five thousand uh pounds, now. The call has ended for twenty twenty five, but that of twenty twenty six is going to come up around maybe January or February. So you can use this to actually plan ahead of time. So if I want to apply for this grant now, I will just go to their website, check the date for last one. That will help me to project for the next one, that is number one, number two, I can use what they funded. This year. So look at what they may likely fund for the next year, so you can do some bit of data analysis there where you can. You know, get all the application, not really the application, but the title or topics or project that we are um. Funded, you can get everything, put them in a spreadsheet and then do the analysis. Then you can know the country that were well funded, the kind of project they are funding and that will help you to plan. For your own application, so looking at this, the deadline for this, this was twenty twenty three application. The deadline was twenty eight of um April, so it means around April will be when the application will close. So normally they will give around one to two months, so something around. Um February, you can begin to check the website to see if um the application is open. And you can subscribe to their uh what is it called newsletter? Because you don't need to be a member to get a newsletter, it's just anyone, but to get other facilities um. Or opportunities with the society, you need to be a member, but the newsletter, you can just sign up. All right, so we are going to do some bit of um hands on. Let me shift to this one here, okay, so the hands on we are going to do is um. Let's go to Google. All right, so though I can only see myself, um. I believe you are following me, now you can just go to Google and type call for. Grants. Application. Twenty twenty six, but then.
We can just see your slides, we can't see your Google.
Oh, sorry, 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 okay, so let me uh share my screen again. Okay, I think I just actually share my entire screen. All right, can you see my screen now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so now uh let's assume we are looking for. Grant opportunity in public health, but let's use microbiology that I used before. So microbiology, you put microbiology alongside with it and then just press enter. And that will give you some funding opportunity, now if we put twenty twenty five. I want you to look at the difference, so you could see uh Scientific being the first, the next was um is um. Microbiology Society, you have the E S C M I D. And then you have Australia, Australasia Society for Infectious Diseases, now if we change it to twenty twenty six. This is very important, you have to be careful with the date or else it may be, it may bring um. Some kind of false positive information for you, so look at this, for example. Scientific has some microbiology related um funding opportunities, so we are going to check that one later. So let me just open that as a new tab, now we have this one, we have got. Microbiota International Grants, we have Australian Society for. Microbes, so this is still related to microbiology and this is around twenty five thousand dollars. Then uh this is sustainable microbiology, so let's try this one. You can see other ones too, this one will close July, first of July twenty twenty six. The one for twenty twenty five for this one is already closed and then there will be a new one for this, so let's take the one that is um. Going to happen twenty twenty six and this is also a conference uh grant, so if you want to present your. Um project in a conference, you are researching a conference and you are a microbiologist, this is something you can look for. I think this is usually two to three years kind of conference, it's not a yearly conference, it's a very big international conference. So let's just look at this Federation of European Microbiological Societies, for example, so you click that. And then you come to the homepage like this, let me just um. So you scroll down. So you can see the maximum amount to be five hundred uh euro and then the application deadline. You have January first and that funding will start first of March or July first. And the funding will start from September, so if you are planning to apply for something like this. January is just less than two months away. The question now is, do you have enough time to apply within two months? Because grant application is not just what you wake up overnight and you just submit, you have to write it in a compelling way, which I believe you have already been taught. So I will go that, go into that, so you look at the application process, what are the eligibility, uh if we click apply now. Okay, so you can see the form. And then you can download the form to see what are the requirements. So this one requires um someone to be a member, I think, or someone needs to register, so let me see if I can. Just um register. Okay, so you just have to fill that, select your area. And then create an account, then you'll be able to apply, now some of this app um. Funding opportunities will require you to be a member of the society, so you need to bear that in mind. But you can still get the one that you don't need to be a member, like for example, this um conference one, you don't need to be a member of um. Any society, usually the condition is for your abstract to be accepted, so once your abstract is accepted, then you can apply, so. The deadline for this one is twenty ninth of April, so which is still enough time to apply and then you just go through. And then you just go through the requirement and then you can apply. So you have delegate assurance and. Yep, so this is who can apply, submit us with highest scoring abstract and so on. And this is also for low and lower middle income countries. So this is something uh anyone can apply for it. But the information is not yet um stated, so they are going to provide it for you. So you can bookmark this and then you can check as often as possible. So that once um the details uh has been made online, you can then apply. So that is for society uh website, let's now go to the database. Now, for you to search for this database, some of them you need to subscribe, so let's quickly look at that. Now, for this, you need to subscribe, but you still have access to free uh package. So you can be given access, I think, for a month for this one. So if I want to apply using this database now, for example, what I would do is um, I would just conclude. If I'm going to apply or not, because I don't have the money to subscribe, so I want to use the free one. So I, I want to make good use of that time. So let's assume I just want to apply. So you come to funding, just click funding. And then come to uh find funding. Once you click that. Sorry, it's a bit slow. Okay, so now you can search. So I will put microbiology there. And then search. Less two hundred posts. Okay, so these are the opportunities that are available at the moment. So microbiology society, remember we got that one the other time. You have this one also, still microbiology society, this is for outreach and engagement grant. Uh this is still microbiology society, microbiology society, uh this is Ukraine. Then you can just click on any of this, this one, uh the deadline is just so few weeks away. And then this is applied microbiology, which we saw the other time. Apply microbiology, European Society of Clinical Microbiology and Infectious Diseases. Uh this one also then to research. So this are the ways in which you can search for the opportunity. And then you can set the uh notification, so if you come here. This is funding a lot, then you can just um. Fill it with your email and then you can get it. Another thing you can do is subscribe to the uh newsletter. With that, you can easily get, so if I want to make use of this database and I don't have the money to subscribe. So what I would just do is search when I'm ready to really apply. So that I can maximize the opportunity and this gave fifty two opportunities. So you go through everything and see which one aligns with what you are looking for. So it's quite a lot, some of them that have closed. So if closed, what I would just do is I would check the closing date. And use that to project for the next year and then I can watch out for that. And that is why you can, uh you should keep the record. So you create your own database using spreadsheets, put the grant opportunity, the current deadline. And then the potential uh deadline, so that will be twenty twenty five, let's say it closes today. Then you project for next year, you forecast for next year to be maybe November eighteenth. And you put it there, so you can then be checking periodically. And if you need to um subscribe to their newsletter, do that so that you can get the notification as things goes on. Yeah, so that is how to use the database. The second one, I will have put us through, but I think I have only six minutes left. All right, so I may need to stop here. And then entertain any question that may be available, I will just go back to this slide. So do we have any question? Any question? I can't hear anyone.
Um, yes, so the drop, there are some questions in the chat. In the Q and, in the Q and A, um Soraya says, I only made, thank you for your time. You said about grants from societies, however, you need to have a membership that is quite expensive for L M I C researchers. How do we go around this issue?
Okay, so one of the ways in which you can go about that is uh one, you can actually write them. Like, uh I remember that of American Society for Microbiology, they have free subscription for um researchers from. Developing countries have benefited from that before. So if you are a microbiologist, for example, you can um ask for such kind of um opportunity from the society. So irrespective of your profession or your discipline, you can actually approach them that you are from developing countries. I mean, country and you like to subscribe to this um society, but you can't afford it. They can give you discount and don't be surprised that in some cases they may just waive it for you. So it's very much possible.
Okay, thanks, um so once one says team members are key in grant application, how do we come about that?
Okay, so when it comes to team member, it's a very critical thing to think through. Because um obviously some grants you can't write it alone, you need, you know, a good team member. But you need to have developed a relationship with those people first. You can't just wake up overnight and say, yeah, I want to um form a team. So you must have a relationship before, for example, you might have written an article, journal article before. You might have um conducted a simple research before. And it's very easy these days to carry out research in collaboration. In the sense that you can write systematic review or scoping review or literature review together and publish it. And with that, you have a kind of relationship that you have built. So you have to firstly build a relationship with some people of like mind. And then, when it comes to grant application, you can easily uh do that. For example, I have a collaboration with someone recently. We published a paper, it's already accepted as at yesterday. And we are like nine on that, on that uh article, if I remember very well. So now with that, we've already formed a group. And if there is a funding opportunity, which we saw one, and I send it to the individual that this is a funding opportunity. And we are looking at the possibility of writing it together. So the first step is to network with others. Form collaboration in other little projects, grants writing, I mean, sorry, um um journal article, manuscript writing. Have that relationship established first. Then, when funding opportunity comes, it will be easy for you to uh bring those people on board. Because you know how to work and get on with one another. Thank you.
Great, um Juliet says, how can I maximize my chances of winning a grant from Africa as a woman? I don't know if there are any gender kind of peculiarities in grants.
Yeah, um generally and globally now, and when I say generally, I mean globally, there's a bit of disparity between um. Men and women when it comes to grant application and some other things, including jobs. However, there's a bit of change in things now. Women are being given priority in some of these applications. So you need to firstly look at it, look at the eligibility, what are the requirements, do they specify? Like, for example, in some of these grants application, they will list it there that um if you are a female. They still allow you, for example, early career researcher now, they still allow a female to be forty five years old and be able to apply. Whereas for men, it will only be forty years old. So you can see the difference. So they've given like five years extra for women and then of just less than that for, I mean, they didn't give any to men. So you need to just look at eligibility to see if women are being considered. And if not, one of the things people don't do is to write the funding organization, you can send email to them. That is, is there any consideration for female or any special consideration? You just find out and let them come back and say, no, oh, we are not considering. But sometimes we just um, we, uh how will I put this? Sometimes people just reject themselves, just rejecting themselves from applying. Because they think they are not qualified for it. But it's much better to apply than not to apply. So you can find out from the funding organization or funder if there's any consideration for female. Then look at the eligibility requirement to see if there is some consideration for female. But I've seen quite some applications, I mean, funding opportunities that consideration has been given to female. You just need to search for them, thank you.
Great, um let's see. Um in India, getting foreign or international grants has stringent norms. For instance, they need to get approval from the AIDS Ministry uh um or approval from the government um. Is there like a, is there, is that like very common from your experience or is maybe that just specific to like India?
Yeah, it could be uh specific to India, um let me just say this. Now, globally, I work in the space of grants um opportunities. I, that's what I work with on daily basis in my work. And um I think for the past five years, I've supported over three hundred grant applications, what's more than three hundred and fifty million dollars. So from what I know globally and with my interaction with colleagues across the world. There is what we call foreign interference. Where some countries are interfering into the affairs of some other countries. And one of the ways they do that is through research. So they can bring up some research project and invite people from other countries to come. And by the time they come, they begin to find out some secret about the country. So some countries are falling victim of that. So due to that, countries have now put in place some measures to avoid such thing to happen. Which I think is one of those things um um India has done, Australia also have it in place, I know of US, I know of UK. So many of these countries have put measures in place, you don't just um get funding from anywhere without. Uh passing through the necessary process, it's, it's a kind of due process to avoid any eventualities that may, that may happen. But it has actually happened that I am aware of here in Australia. Where a particular country, you know, penetrated Australia through research opportunity. And I know somebody who actually lost their job too, because they got money from a particular country for research.
Right, um thanks for your lecture, can someone with no track record of sponsored research? Um and they get grants like your first, can a first timer get grants without no track record?
Yes, you can. So it's all about how you are able to write your application. Like, for example, uh the Royal Society for Tropical Medicine and Health, you can apply for that. You don't need to have a grant um track record before, you can apply. So what I will encourage everyone to do, those who don't have the experience, start from something small. Like I said, this year I got travel grants. I've gotten research grant before, but I still apply for those little, little kind of grant. So as to boost my profile, of course, I, I do have a good profile when it comes to um over three hundred and fifty million um grants. Uh projects, so but then, when it comes to you having the track record, you have to start from little and it's just from bottom up. Start from little and grow up, but in a nutshell, a first timer can get research grant if they write the application very well.
Um, how do I make a realistic budget that will not be affected in case of inflation?
Okay, now, I'm not sure if this person is um asking the question in the capacity of an individual. But if they are associated with an institution, now each institution have, don't let me say each, but. Some institution, they do have means of, you know, budgeting research funding. And it's one of those area that I do, when it comes to budgeting, budgeting is a very complex thing in research funding. Because that's what we call direct cost and indirect cost. But most time, people don't consider the indirect cost when they are applying for funding. And as a result of that, they may under uh request for funding and at the end of the day, you are fair then. So you need to consider the direct cost, the direct cost has to do with the cost that is directly associated with the project. For example, maybe you are going to pay salary for research assistance, you are going to buy equipment. That has to do with that, of course, indirect cost has to do with uh facilities that you are going to use. Maybe you are going to um go to a particular lab to send your sample there. So these are extra costs, but they are not really directly related. But they are still required for that research to be completed. So you need to budget both, so to make it realistic, you have to consider those two. Factors that I've said not really factor of those two aspects. And then number two is in a typical environment like Australia. We have like two percent that has been automatically added to each budget. So there's a spreadsheet that we use, for example, and that inflation has been considered, you know, in a yearly basis. So if you put the uh your figures there, automatically it had that two percent inflation to it. So you need to just factor that one in when you are preparing your budget, you need to factor in what is the inflation. And then add that one to it, also the indirect cost. So that will make your um project to be able to balance, but don't, don't um. Don't deliberately increase the budget so that you can make room for that. No, you have to be, you know, transparent and um, you know, you must maintain your personal integrity when it comes to funding. Don't, don't do anything dodgy, because if the funding organization gets to know, one, they can withdraw the money and two, the person may be banned. From applying for them, uh to them again.
Right, um. Let's see. What I, what are your chances of winning a grant if you do not have any shared publication with the team?
You can still get it.
Yeah.
Like I said, track record is one of those things, but writing the application itself is very, very important. So it's all about what you are going to do with the research. I mean, if you apply for a grant and um you have a very good team, but what has been written is not really good. You, you, you won't get it that way. So the team is one, but it's not really the most important thing. The most important thing is the application itself, how well written is the application? And then the um, now, when grant applications have been assessed, there is. A percentage for the quality of the application, there is a percentage for the uh visibility of the application of the project. There is some percentage for around four different kind of things. So one of them could be that team uh member. But it's not really in most cases, because an individual can decide to apply without using any uh team member. So but the emphasis is you being able to write a quality application. And to write a couple uh quality application takes time, it takes a lot of effort to do. So you can get it without a team member, but it must be of quality.
Okay, um is it ethical to use a proposal for multiple grant applications at the same time?
Well, it's not really good in the sense that what if the application is successful in all? Of course, the chances is a bit low, but what of, what if uh the application is successful for two, how do you go about it? So it's going to be problematic. So the best thing is maybe you have a very big project. And then you have the projects, you know, being sliced into s- no simpler one that you can then. But you're taking one single application and then submitting it to another. At the same time, no, it's just like manuscript, if you are submitting manuscript for publication, you have to declare that it has not been submitted elsewhere. At that moment, if it has been submitted, you have to wait for it to be rejected. So once it's rejected, you can then submit it, but if you submit, it's okay, I've had an experience with someone during my master's degrees many years ago. He submitted and uh. He submitted an uh a manuscript for it to a journal. And he didn't hear anything from the journal anymore. I think he followed up, there wasn't any response. Then he decided to go and submit elsewhere. And surprisingly, the new journal accepted it. And I was just searching something here online, and then I saw the other one. So the two were published. Now, what will he do? So he has to, it's it's a problematic thing to do. So I would not encourage that.
Yeah, um, and like just also like this has happened maybe before, like a few years ago where I applied for. Multiple action with the same grand and I kind of got bored. So what I did was I emailed both of them and I explained the situation that um I wasn't sure if. I was just like, you know, I I didn't want to put up all my eggs in one basket and um. And they sponsor it fifty fifty percent. And they were like, you know what? We're happy to give you the old money, but can you develop like a phase three of the project and give some ideas? And so I kind of expanded the scope of the research and I was able to use both funded and both of them were like cool, co-funding partners. Um, so if if that has happened already to you, and that's why you're asking, you know, just be very transparent and the process with both funders. And um you'd be surprised how very good they may also like take it as well. Right, um, yeah, then someone says. For some research grants, they ask for a collaborator from countries such as Germany, US, or even the UK. And some will say the institution that is hosting you. Um, I have seen cases where participants from LMICs have difficult getting responses from this. Um, international collaborators and losing the grants. How can this be addressed?
Okay, uh, thanks for that question. Now, like I said earlier on, it's very good that you firstly form collaboration even. Without applying for grants. Now, I have collaborators in UK, I have in. Do I have people around like that that I've already developed a relationship with? Like someone that's high have a relationship with currently, he happens to be in Australia, but currently moved to Norway. So now. The opportunity that I saw has to do with Norway researchers. So currently that is in Norway. It's quite easy for him to bring those in Norway on board. They will be the lead and then. We can then be part of the project. So it's very important that you, we are intentional in establishing a kind of um. Uh, relationship with um people beyond our own country because of things like this. And it it takes time. It takes time. Some of them may not reply, but some may reply. So it's a matter of building that relationship in a gradual way. So it's not something that can happen overnight. Because if I've not met you before, I've not had any relationship with you before. And because I'm in Australia and they needed someone in Australia to be part of the project and then you emailed me. And so there is this application. Obviously, I may not be interested in it. Because it may not even be my area of interest. So but if that relationship has been developed before. It should be very easy to then transition into applying application together. So I will encourage. Um, those of us from developing countries to be intentional in having a kind of established collaboration and relationship. With people in the, you know, in the north or south, south and north coming together to write papers, collaborate. Through this um workshop, for example, those who are here, you've been together for some time now. Um, on grant writing. So you develop that kind of, you know, uh, professional relationship where you can exchange ideas. So it should go beyond. Just attending this um workshop and then there is, oh, no, we can go beyond that. I will give you an example. When I did my PhD. I have two colleagues from Indonesia that we are, we are under the same supervisors. And then eventually everyone completed their own PhD. Those two other people went back to their country, but we kept, you know. In contact, we are still in contact and um I do invite them for, you know, publication. Um, manuscript writing, they do invite me also for manuscript writing. And at the moment, I think we've written two books together. We've uh book chapters together. We've written like ten articles and they are not in Australia anymore. So being intentional with that kind of relationship is very important in anywhere we are. So some of them, you may meet them in conferences. Be intentional, relate with them, get their um contacts, email them. We should not just attend conference for attending sake. For me, I don't attend, attend conference as such. But if I want to attend conference, I will attend intentionally. I want to get something out of it, not just attend for attending sake, but. To get something out of it. So being intentional about the relationship we build with other researchers across the globe is very important. Thank you.
Okay, uh, we already have time, but we can take one last question. Um, and this comes up a lot. Um, terms of use of AI in grant writing. So Tabakla says, what is allowed and what is not allowed when it comes to AI in grant writing?
Okay, so let it go. So, um, AI, that is a big one. Um. It's an ethical issue when you use AI to write. So. When AI is the one, I mean, you use AI to write, you are not the one who holds the intellectual property anymore. Of course, you are the one who type writes grant application on XYZ, but the house foot. Is not yours. And some of these funding, um, funding organizations, they are now using. Anti-AI or AI detector to check the application. Let me give you an uh uh an example. One of the big grants in Australia, the reviewer. Actually use AI to review the application. And it was detected. And I think the person was banned. And then there was a policy that's. No one should use AI to, you know, assess any grant application. The same thing. The policy also said that you cannot use AI to write. But if you use it at all. You have to declare it that I use AI. Now, what AI can be used to do in grant writing is to polish the English. For those of us who are not um native English speaker, so you can write it yourself and then it's like giving an editor. To edit it for you and make the English look um much better. But you need to check with the funding organization. If they accept the use of AI to polish the English one or if they don't accept it at all. But personally, I wouldn't encourage the use of AI in any form of writing. You can use it for brainstorming. That is okay. But using it to write everything completely is unethical. So I would discourage that.
Alright, thank you very, very much, Limin. This has been an amazing session. Um, we need to wrap up because we have a small group session after this. You should have started already. Uh, but thank you very, very much. I will get your slides and share it to folks that we are unable to join as well, um, for them to go over. So thank you so much and thanks.